And speaking of, let's move on to the next item, which is where some of those resources could be heading, and move on to a presentation from Ann Coleman regarding landscape design for Mary Kyle Hartson City Square Park. I asked Ann if she would come and do a presentation based on where she's at, since we authorized her to start the design work for Mary Kyle Hartson Park and the square in particular. And she gave me a sneak preview the other day. I'm not the one on the task force, so I didn't have the input on the design, but Ann's been working hard. And I thought that because we're receiving the check, which if council is to continue moving forward, funding the project through these settlement dollars, this would be a good time for Ann to show us just the very beginning concepts that she's working on for how she might be looking at the square for design. And I think she's got a lot of good things to say. So with that, I will yield the floor to Ann for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members and city staff and everyone else that's on the phone call. We are more than delighted to be with you tonight and very excited, as Mayor Travis said, to show you the beginnings of what we think will be an incredible asset and rejuvenator and facilitator of community in your community, right in the heart of downtown. So with that, Jose, who is a project manager for the project, who has put together a beautiful document, will kick us off on this presentation. What we're seeing here is the overall site plan of the square with Center Street at the north, Burleson to our west, Main to the east, and Miller Street to the south. The existing features of the park are, of course, the old City Hall, which is now the Senior Activities Center, the gazebo to the southeast, the existing fountain, and there are some historic benches, picnic tables, that are onsite that will be remaining as well. The diagonal crosswalks that are existing today are presently four feet wide. We are proposing that, because they are in the historic designated amenities, we are proposing and hope we can get approval and some support to widen them to six feet wide, primarily for ADA access. ADA access, which is a federal mandate, requires that movement for a wheelchair is three feet wide. So at their present width of four feet wide, that only enables a wheelchair alone to travel, which is not the spirit of that law. The spirit of the law is that you could have a companion walking side by side with you, so you are not separated from the other pedestrians. So for that reason alone, six feet wide, we think would be a much better facilitator of movement through the park. And again, it's historic in its nature anyway. So that's one of our goals there. The other circulation goal that we're very excited about is noted, can I point here, Jose?
Yes.
Is noted as number seven on our plan, which is a 10-feet-wide stabilized decomposed granite path, which we're very excited about, because it allows one to move from any point on the square to the interior and then move all the way through the park without getting on the diagonals. And so it really unifies these different spaces that we're going to talk about in a minute, these different quadrants, each with a different purpose onsite. And so we really like this idea of this park-like path that is able to give a lot of people. Another highlight of the project is what we are calling it the promenade. It's a linear plaza. It's 20 feet wide, which is generous enough to facilitate several things. One would be, for example, a farmer's market, where you could put tents up on one side. Another purpose would be just, instead of linear plaza, you could have seating all the way down here. You could also have like a book fair, or you could have healthcare vans, like there's a vaccination, or come get your pets looked at. These would be lay-down curb spots, where you could get a vehicle in here, like a food truck festival, for example. And that would accommodate vehicular traffic as well as pedestrian traffic. So it's a really nice kind of urban spine that really moves from the center of Center Street all the way to Miller. And I think it really is nice that it just kind of unifies the center of this with activity. In this center area, presently, the flagpoles are right here outside of the back door. And it's kind of got an awkward relationship here. So we are proposing moving the flagpoles over to this area. Is that correct, Jose?
Number six.
Number six, thank you. I was like, I knew it was close to this area. So number six. So they are still on axis and formal, but they're out of the way of this area. This promenade, I forgot to mention, is all pavers. So it's got a very much of kind of a downtown, old-town feel to it. I'll go back up to the top. Up here, which is perfect to mention at this time of the year, is the Holiday Tree location, right here in the center. The rest of the time of year, it would be annual color, or it could even be some sort of, just it could be a small piece of sculpture that you could remove. It could be signage. And around that is a place to gather around the Holiday Tree. It could be used year-round, too, for gathering points throughout the year. Across from that are two little minor sidewalks under these gorgeous trees for picnic tables. So that's showing here. So you could get a piece of pie, you could get food from your food truck, and gather in this picnic area amongst, like I said, these trees. The trees are faded back, so we can see what's going underneath them. But you can see they're throughout the park. We're not proposing to remove any tree. There is one tree in this area, I believe it's this one. Is that why, Jose? It's right here. You're right, it's this one. There is one tree right here that doesn't look like it's doing very well, and it does fall in the middle of this particular, as I mentioned, the radius sidewalk. So we will look at that carefully. If the tree stays, we would just move that path out slightly to accommodate it. But right now, it seems like it's not doing really, really well. Another big activator and highlight of the park is utilizing this gazebo in a slightly different way. Having been out there now several times during this project, observing people using the park on different days and different hours. Right now, a few people, they gather here, but they also spread out. There's no real consolidated area for children to play. And it's really interesting to watch the kids. They'll run around, but they're almost like looking for something to do, it seems. So we are proposing integrating a nature play playscape. This playscape is an off, I say it's off-the-shelf. In other words, it's readily available, and it's certified safe. So it is, it's not like just sawn logs off of a property, but it looks very natural. We'll show you some examples of what that looks like. So it would go here amongst the trees. So ideally, parents could sit here and observe their children playing in the playground, so there's more synergy in this area. South of that, a little bit west, we've kept this just as an open flexible lawn. So if there is some sort of ceremony, a person could stand here, and we could put tables and chairs in this open flexible lawn. So it's a very flexible piece of the park down here that is anchored by the gazebo. And then on the southwest quadrant, we have a botanical garden, which we'll show you in a little more detail. We're going to zoom in on these a little bit, so you can kind of get a feel. These, of course, are inspiration boards. They're obviously not exactly what we're looking at here, but to give you a feel for what this area would look like, this is kind of a rendition. Of course, ours is at a smaller scale, that we would have articulated pavement, like so, and kind of a radius treatment at this plaza. And that's where our tree would go ceremonially at the holiday season. The type of furniture that we're talking about is something that is ADA accessible. This is a steel structure. It can be anchored. It's got plenty of room for people to gather. There's four-foot ones, there's six-foot ones, there's seven-feet ones. So we plan on having a variety of lengths for people to choose from in this area. So that's an example of what that picnic table might look like. And then here in this area, closer to the center, we're looking at doing like an artificial turf or lawn space to put out Adirondack furniture. Again, these are heavy-duty, they're made from a recycled product. So they're not what you see at Lowe's and Home Depot. They're decidedly different, and they're made for commercial space. This is an actual photo of one of our projects where this product was used. So something that's more lounge-like in this area. And of course, we talked a little bit about the Holiday Tree. Let me get me to the next page. Thank you. This is the area where we were talking about the gazebo. So we're trying to show how this gazebo might be used for a ceremonial lawn in this area, similar to this, where the chairs could all be lined up in here under the trees, and you could have an event in this quadrant. And then the playscape, this is, again, kind of an inspiration of what that playscape might look like. This might have a little bit more equipment than the size of our space would allow, but you can see how it's not primary colors. We don't want to propose anything in this park that looks trendy or new, brand-spanking-new. It needs to be soft and very accessible, and blend in with the trees and the lawn and the existing plantings onsite. And then this is an example of what this path may look like. Again, it's not concrete, so it's very soft and recreational, would have planting along the way. So that's an idea here of how that may circulate through the park on this side of the promenade. The other area is where the fountain is, right next to the existing of City Hall. And so that is showing that the fountain, right now, presently has pavement right up to it. And we are, right now, the vault sits right here, the pump vault does. So we're going to add some planting around the, just low planting, as you can see here, something low that kind of just keeps people away from the fountain and makes it kind of sit down in the landscape a little bit more, and be a softer expression of this space right here, much more park-like. And let's see. The promenade, we've already talked about a little bit. You can see how it interacts with that landscape area. We would propose four new trees in this area, because right now, it's a lot of concrete pavement. So we're actually shrinking the amount of heat island in that area, too. So it's going to be much more comfortable space. Okay, our really fun spot here is the botanical garden. This is an idea of what we want it to look like. Zeroscape plants, places to sit, maybe a bird bath, bird feeder. And along the promenade, having every other post maybe have a hanging basket on it. Again, the promenade and how that path would look going throughout it. So lots of places to enjoy the vegetation here. We would have some rain garden material in here, too, for education purposes. So if you have a student field trip in here, they could see how the native plants work to manage water quality. And again, the native plants and how they attract pollinators and birds. So a very soft, meandering educational space, right there in the southwest quadrant. Is that it?
That's it.
I believe that's it. I hope that gives you an overall view of where we are. As the mayor mentioned, this is our first blush at, first solution. And things are fitting very well, even within the budget right now. That's where we are, is looking for feedback for where we are and making sure we're within the budget and the goals for meeting the desires for the Historic Commission, and of course, everybody else in the community. So with that, I am more than happy to take in questions.
Thank you, Ann. Does anybody have any questions? Councilor Ellison.
Thank you. First of all, great to see you, Ann, and meet you as well, Jose, over there on the side. And I was halfway expecting the red glasses.
I know. I have my ring tonight, so there you go.
Okay, that's cool.
The Aggies did win, so.
Yes, they did. Where you at, Rizzo?
Well, we certainly appreciate.
That's right.
Well, we certainly appreciate the presentation. This is exciting for a number of us. And I was really excited to see what you've been doing. And I was really happy to hear, you know, you've spent quite a bit of time observing in our downtown park and the actions that are going on there. Obviously, still, even in a pandemic, people understand the importance of open spaces and green spaces and being outdoors. So thank you for that due diligence. If we could go to the slide that kind of shows the larger picture, that'd probably be helpful for me to kind of point out things. And where to begin on this? So, one, there are a lot of aspects I love about this. Certainly, this bottom, I guess that would be the southwest corner, where your marker is there. I absolutely love this. Adding green plant space, and I love the educational idea you had behind it, botanical gardens, all that stuff is wonderful. Particularly, that right now, that southwest corner kind of is the, it's kind of left out. I'll just say that. So that, to me, speaks volumes. I love the idea of what you're doing in that area. So that quadrant, in my opinion, is fantastic. I actually do really like the promenade idea, as well as the, what are you calling it? The radio-unifying path? I like that idea. One question I had immediately with the promenade, I'm sure the unifying path will be permeable. Was the idea with the promenade to be permeable pavers?
We could use permeable pavers. Yes, we can. And we use a lot of those at the Miller Development Project. So certainly, they're a little more expensive, but we can certainly try to get them in there. We may have to reduce them a little bit, if so. But I think that's an excellent thought, and no reason why we shouldn't be able to do so.
Yeah, fantastic. And one of the things I loved about it, particularly when we were talking about that southwest quadrant, is that educational piece and stormwater management and different things like that. And so that, I know that's something we're trying to incorporate in other parts of our city, is LID, green infrastructure, and some of the different ways we can do that. And so, just an idea, and if that could be kicked around and see what could be done with that, I think that would be really neat.
What are your ideas?
Let's see. I do like the idea of adding the trees in the central area there. And kind of, trees are important, trees are huge. I think they also attract people, and people want shade particularly, and trees provide that opportunity. I don't know if you noticed, but it was brought up by, I was actually in our downtown square today, watching our staff do last-minute touches on our Christmas decorations. And one of the staff members brought up to me about that fountain. And she was talking about her OCD qualities and how that it's slightly not centered. And I wonder if you noticed that? I'm sure you did, Ann. But one thing I did like about your proposal here is adding that green space around the fountain. I think that would be a great addition to it. I always felt like, you know, there's a whole story with that fountain. I'm sure somebody might fill you in on that one day. But one thing I really thought about it, and you had a great picture earlier, showing a fountain with the plantation around it and different things like that. And I think that's a really awesome look, and I think that would really add a lot to that fountain as well.
It'll make, like I said, I use the term "sit in" better, but it feels like it's sticking out right now, and this is why I think we'll settle it into the landscape.
Right, absolutely. You did make a remark about the trees. I know you've gone through there and done your observations and assessments of them. You're exactly right where your marker is right now. We've been talking about that tree, actually, particularly since we've been doing the decorations. I guess at some point, it was popular to put some kind of structure around the root base of a tree. And it created this, the root system to kind of bulk up and whatnot. And obviously, that is, it's not good for the tree. As much as we would love to save our trees and different things like that, I'm sure you'll make the best recommendations for what we should do with that.
And sometimes, those are obviously the most difficult of decisions to make. Having had to make many of them over my career, putting in a new, healthier tree, it doesn't take too long, maybe five years, for that new tree to have the same canopy as the one you removed. And it's younger and healthier, and it's basic succession planting. And that, so as painful as it is, it's horticulturally and arborically a good thing to consider to do.
That's good to know. So if that did go down that route, and then you also mentioned adding four additional trees to the center, what type of trees would you have in mind for that?
In here, with more than likely something like a chinkapin, I think would be nice. It's a little small, I think for live oaks there. Chinkapin's being more upright, very similar to a red oak. And we don't have a lot of variety of trees, obviously, in the park. So introducing some new species that are native to our area, I think would be a good thought. So I think I would do something like a chinkapin, being a mid-size, open-canopy tree.
Awesome. I will look that up. Not familiar with that type of tree and how that looks, but definitely something to research on.
That makes, I'm sorry. I was going to mention that you bring up a good point, which is, there's more good things to come. You know, once we get a general consensus that this is the direction we want to pursue, we will bring even more information during the next phase of design development, not only incorporating your thoughts today, but getting more and more specific about species and such, and paver types. We'll be next.
Yeah, absolutely. I just did a quick search of the chinkapin, right? Chinkapin tree?
That's correct.
Very good tree. And it's, so I guess, going back to the tree we were talking about that is struggling there where the number seven is, would that be replacing it with, I guess, what type of tree would we, if that were to be the route, what would be the idea in replacing that tree?
I would propose a live oak, I believe. I think it was a live oak. I think having a healthier, younger live oak would be a good idea. And it may be that we want to look closely about whether we need to add a couple of more young trees, maybe not just live oaks. But I think having the major canopy of live oak is indicative of how the site has been historically. So I would hesitate to add too many different varieties in that core. I think in here, we could introduce some more ornamental trees, because this is not a complete design yet. But we may have some red buds, or bohensias, and desert willows, just so the composition of this is complete, not only with plants, but some ornamental trees that really spice up the variety for the learning experience in that quadrant.
I love that. That's a great idea. Two other comments, and then, Council, I'll stop talking. But I'm interested to see on Section 5, the Kitty Corral idea. Certainly, you know, you make a good point about children probably out there looking for something to do. It's not, you know, your typical kind of children park, you know. But, so that will be interesting as that evolves, and I'll be curious about how that comes about. I like the idea of the lawn space in the southeast quadrant, next to the gazebo. It is, I've seen, sometimes I will walk down there and I'll see, even during the pandemic, where there's been like very small groups, they're distanced from each other, and they'll just sit there and have long-distance talks under that gazebo and different things. It's really unique. And I think even one of the examples you gave, it kind of showed where the gazebo and then the seating outside there. So certainly, something could be had. We had a proposal in that square last year during the holiday season, so maybe we'll get a wedding in there. But last thing, I just wanted to say, I think, you know, I appreciate the attention to detail, and you are working on this. I've been excited about you being a part of this, Ann and your team. Some might not know, but you did the work outside of Kyle Field, down in College Station, and now you're working here in Kyle, where is one of the sons of the Kyle family. So I think that's pretty cool and unique. My last comments will be just about the Hayes Historical Commission. Obviously, being very cognizant of working with them, I just want to see if those communications have already started or those anticipated on coming here in the near future, and just very briefly, how those are going.
Yes, we met with Kate Johnson, yes, on, was that Tuesday or Wednesday before Thanksgiving?
Tuesday.
Tuesday before Thanksgiving. We met her out there. She was very accommodating, because we were speaking to you guys and suggested that we go ahead and initiate that. She was lovely. We had a packet that you're seeing tonight, a hard copy, and oriented her onsite and walked through all of the elements. She had a couple of comments about the picnic tables. We originally had thought about relocating them from this area into this area, and even maybe not using them as picnic tables anymore, but taking the tops off and using them as stepping stones or a place for bench, because they don't meet ADA. And they're, they've got, because of the time that they were built, they don't have the right heights, they're not comfortable. But she was not excited about that idea. That was really her only comment. I did ask her at the end of the presentation what her impressions were, and she said that she would, she appreciated everything she'd get back with us, and that she was going to contact, I believe, the Texas Historic Commission and initiate that, which we would like to be involved in that, too, of course, because we would love to present our work on your behalf, because we do that well. And that's one of our next discussion points with you, is some direction on what to do next in that regard.
Absolutely. And I'm very excited to hear that. You're absolutely right. Mrs. Johnson is a very sweet lady, and the way you've described her is no different than my impression of her and my interactions with her as well. I had a feeling you were going to mention that, and she might have some comments about those picnic tables. And having conversations with some folks, including our staff, the likelihood of moving those and keeping them intact is probably very low to none.
Yes.
So that may be a challenge. But I like the idea and the ingenious of maybe reusing them and repurposing them. So obviously, that, we will have some more discussions and some conversations with the Hayes Historical Commission on figuring that out. The one last comment, I promise I'm done, Council, after this, was the attention to the American with Disabilities Act and your points on widening the sidewalks and different things, and incorporating that throughout the entire park. Wonderful. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Councilor Ellison. Any further comments or questions?
Mayor, Councilmember Rizzo. Yeah, Ann, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. I really appreciate what you're doing around the fountain. I'm not a big fan of that fountain, but what you're proposing is really going to add a lot of, take a little bit away from the fountain and give it a little more features to it, to make it more presentable in that area and give it a lot more aesthetics. I think that's what it was lacking. I think it was just, it was just too big of a focal centerpiece there, and adding the landscape around it, I think is going to make it very beautiful. I think it's going to make it a lot better. One of the things I want to point out is over on the Burleson side of the old City Hall, historic City Hall, you know, in that area right there, that's usually, for some reason, that's considered the back door, but it's usually our front door, because everybody goes in and out of that door because of the parking and not having to hit the steps on the other side of the building.
I think the feed just went out. And I really wanted to hear what he was about to say, too, because.
Hold on.
Councilor Rizzo, sorry, we lost you. We lost the feed there for just a second. We got you back now, so go ahead.
Okay. So on that side is actually what many of our residents of ours considered the front door, for some reason, even though it's not. It's actually the back door. But I'd love to see something in that area that's welcoming. I always think of Kyle as a very welcoming city. I'd love to see something there that honors that. No matter how much we've grown, we've always been a very welcoming city. I'd like to see something in that area that maybe would signify that. If you could come up with something, I'd really appreciate it for that part of the square.
Point very well taken, because we have not focused as much around the building itself. You can see here, we're really not showing anything. So it's time for us to absolutely, I appreciate that feedback, give this some attention.
Thank you, Ann. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor Rizzo. I agree with your comments, so, wholeheartedly. Any other questions or comments? Ann, I had one brief one, and it's really more the technical landscaping, I'm sorry, and the lighting and the irrigation, are those plans that will be forthcoming as we get further? I know you're not into that technical phase yet. Just wanted to hear that if we're going to be doing a lot of these plantings, that while we're in there, turn in that dirt that we're installing, the proper irrigation, so that we can maintain this at the level that it is installed.
Absolutely. And we're starting to indicate it. These are being streetscape fixtures, but we have not gotten to that level. It is time for us to do so. Once these elements, we know that they're going to stay where they are, and it sounds like we're in pretty good shape moving forward, then that's exactly what we'll do, is support these pathways that we've decided upon, and new spaces, and make sure that they have lighting, irrigation, and new, the soil area, the surface area of the park, needs some good organic matter incorporated in the top two to three inches before we plant new sod out there, or even seed, and if it's the seeded areas in these wildflower zones. But absolutely. But absolutely, that is the next step is lighting.
Okay. And then I was also, I prefer the, the, the children's playscape area that you have proposed there because it all looks very low profile and non-intrusive. The image below shows those features, which I think, you know, the balance beams, I think that's perfect. I'm a little bit concerned about some large structure there and I don't think there's room for that anyway. So my feedback to you on that is to keep going in the direction that you're showing here on number five and not to spend personally, you know, too much time trying to build some large vertical structures. There's other places for that and that square is probably not one of them. But that's a nice little low profile way to have the kids be doing something while the mom and dad are walking around or having a meeting with friends. It keeps them engaged and helps them to, to stay there longer, which invites families to come and stay longer and helps with commerce. So it's certainly good, but that'd be my feedback on that.
Absolutely. Which brings up another question. We haven't looked into doing this yet, but we are thinking about having an exterior water fountain and with a place for a dog to have a bowl filled too. And more than likely, our water source for potable water will be off of this building. So if I can get a nod of agreement that that might be an amenity that we want to add to this, we will explore that further. Thoughts about that?
I'm lukewarm, but, but I understand the thought process personally. Anyone else have thoughts on that? Whether you want to add a designated area for, for animals to get a drink?
Or even humans, a drinking fountain, yeah. Water bottle filler, filler, something like that.
I think with COVID-19 being what it is right now and I, I guess we're moving away from those areas. Our hope is hopefully to have the infrastructure, maybe a little restaurant or something nearby and more shops that they could, people could come out, get, get some ice cream, snow cone, maybe a drink and come out to the park, enjoy a coffee is what our vision for that is. So I think we'd be okay with, without having that fountain there.
Okay. That's, that's perfectly good because that is always something you could add later if you needed to. So that's good to know. We are also not showing any bicycle parking here so far. I, I think, kind of feel like we probably should provide a few. Are there any thoughts about that?
I'm more interested in that as long as it's not big, you know, because there's different ways of doing bicycle parking. You can have it be some prominent feature, expecting lots of people, which is not likely. But at any point, there might, might be someone wanting to take a ride and would like to park their bike. That's certainly in the spirit of the walkability that we're looking for. So something modest would be my feedback, but certainly if you can find a spot for it. But that's just my thoughts. Counsel?
I agree. Something modest as well. Nothing too bulky or out of its way. I think that it certainly sets in the spirit of our pedestrian friendly and connectivity there. Taking a step back on the water thing, I actually do like the idea, just not in the traditional sense of a water fountain that you, you know, put your hands on and different things. There are the ones where you simply put something under it to refill your water. And then as well as, you know, the, the little, I know they have the foot stool, the foot press ones for, for, for animals and different things. I know that is something always very much appreciated of pet owners when they have a place to hydrate their pets.
Well, we may look at, you know, the opportunity of where we would place one and maybe, you know, provide a, you know, outlet or something that doesn't preclude it from being added. And if we can, you know, include it in the estimate for the whole project, maybe we look at that as an optional item. Get that again as we further develop.
I think maybe part of what our consternation is here on that is if you go to Greg Clark Park, we have exterior water fountains and that, they haven't worked as long as I've been here. I've never been able to get water out of them. So I'm thinking about the long term and what's it gonna look like five years from now? So if you've got something in mind in particular in that area and some good images to show how it would stay functional without lots of maintenance, that would also be helpful, I think, as a presentation piece.
Okay. Well, during the next phase, then we'll, we'll look at that, bringing, bringing some ideas forward.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, I appreciate the presentation. I know there's a long way to go. Here in just a few minutes, we're gonna have a conversation about a kind of a public engagement process of what that might look like as we're continuing to move forward. I know you're moving forward with this contract and doing your design work, so we're not necessarily trying to slow anything down, but setting up an opportunity to present to more than just the council because this isn't really where we get our best audience. That'll be a discussion we'll have here in just a minute. Anything else?
Would you like for me to stay online to bounce ideas off of or should I?
Well, it's, that agenda item is in the spirit of this one. The only reason I had it separated was because of the 104 South Burleson contract and discussions. That project is not quite ready to go and we still have a little bit more time on that one. So I'm not sure, Scott, if they're even, if that group is here. But if you, if you have thoughts on that, Anne, you could go ahead and present it now and we can just have that conversation so that you can get on about your day.
Oh, if I have thoughts about the public engagement, is that what you're asking me?
Well, I have thoughts, but if you wanted to have a discussion about it now, I don't know if Katie McShane is here, Scott. I can't see the, the council chambers.
Well, would you want me to go ahead and, and start, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I, I think public engagement is fantastic and we, we do it all the time. Generally, when we, we start the public engagement process, we start from a blank slate. And we, we, in this condition, in this situation, of course, we have some givens. You know, we have obviously the gazebo, we have the old Kyle Sleep City Hall, we have the, the tower with the bell in it, we have some fixed items and we would show those. And then generally, we brainstorm with the community on things they would like to see in the park. That's the purest way of public engagement. I'm sure it's not the first time y'all have experienced that. In this case, where we're much further along, we would probably just do something similar to what we've done today is present kind of where we are and get, get their response to it. The only concern I would have is how to moderate it if you get dissenters or people that want something completely different. You know, for example, they could say, I want a splash pad or I don't, I don't, I want it to stay like it is because I like more open grass. Just how to field those questions when they come up. Of course, I'm capable of giving my opinion, but it's really not my opinion that ultimately matters. It's the aim of trying to draw consensus with your leadership, right? And where, the wisdom that y'all have encountered in even proposing all of this. So that would be my only concern is the position we would be in if we get those that have concerns, how to answer their concerns without blowing this thing up.
Right. Well, that certainly, it's a, it's a, it's a delicate path because, you know, this council has tried to be proactive, understanding that, you know, moving the city forward is, and revitalizing downtown is something that many of us hold near and dear. And so, you know, but at the same time, we're not, we want to, we want to engage the city and make sure that the, the city just gets an opportunity to, to look at these projects firsthand. You know, some of the public engagement that we've done in the past ahead of decisions really hasn't gotten a lot of feedback one way or another. And then the feedback comes after the thing is brought forward. And, and so there's just not a whole lot that we can do because getting everybody to agree on landscaping of a square is, is not gonna happen. It's just, it's just not gonna happen one, one way or another. And i- if you said, does, does everybody want to keep it the same? You'd get a lot of no's and some yeses and you want to change it. It's a lot of no's. And so what we're not trying to, what I'm not trying to do is get you to go and build consensus for the council and on behalf of the council. That's not the point. The point is to give the public an opportunity to hear what is being prepared in a, in the early goings of the, of the, the design so that any of those smaller feedbacks and ideas that people have that are maybe good that we're, maybe we haven't thought of, could, could be brought back to the council as feedback as well as to you as well. And that's kind of the, the, the spirit of it. So I love the presentation that you just gave. I think that would be a, a good presentation to give in a, you know, in a different setting than the one we have here. And then to give the people that do participate an opportunity to provide that feedback and then bring that feedback to the council and, and allow us to have another discussion about it at that time.
Another, another, let's see, it's another presentation style that we've used. In the past is the storytelling mode, having an image that shows where the historic features are, really building the story behind what was there and then what's yet to come. And, and then maybe showing some 3D images of people in the park so that they can really see what it's going to feel like here for those that can't read plans very well. Y'all see it a lot, as you well know, but some people will get a little disoriented with even the scale. You know, for example, the, the real difference maker in this, believe it or not, is gonna be the promenade. I mean, it's going to really, everything else is going to look great and support the overall park, but that promenade is gonna be very impactful when it's in the ground, but you really can't tell it by looking at this image. So it would help us communicate to them to, to, to do this just slightly differently, to show them how we came up with these ideas, why we put in the radius unifier, why we have the playscape where we do, kind of showing it layering up. And then maybe showing them some options within this, saying that we can do a playscape like this or out of this material, we could do one like that, letting them have some input into it.
Yeah. I, I think, it, it sounds to me like you have your, your mind wrapped around it pretty well. So, and you do a very good job at presenting and designing creatively and thoughtfully. So I'm not, I'm not concerned about it so long as you're the one behind it because I think you've, you've been developing a lot of trust with us up till this point and, and so we're glad to have you at the helm. So.
Well, that's, that sounds okay to you. We would enjoy putting that together. And I, I do think the storytelling and explaining how we derive this will get more people invested and excited than just saying, here it is, right?
Well, and it very well could have to be virtual at this point as, as well. So if we have it, you know, let's say in the next four weeks, four or five weeks, you know, it very well could be virtual, maybe right after the first of the new year. Do y'all have a, a date? I know, I know this isn't new. I pinged you about it before just so you could be thinking about all that.
Yes, Mr. Stone, I think, proposed the 14th or 16th of January. I want to say 16.
Yes, Mayor, it's, it's the 14th, Thursday the 14th at 7:00 PM is the proposed date.
Okay. And would, would that timeframe work for me? Like, would that slow you down necessarily, understanding that there's additional feedback that we're gonna be receiving on this project at that time?
The presentation that I'm proposing, we can do within that time period. And if, if the feedback we get is minor, I don't think so. The question that we would have for us as a team, including you guys, is should we continue to move forward with our documents prior to that meeting? Or should we hit the pause button until then?
Counsel, do you have thoughts on that question?
I have a question in general, please. This is.
Councilwoman Floris Kell, go ahead.
Yes, I just, in regards to her virtual idea, I was just wondering if it was possible to make a video, which we can post online, so people can watch it during their own time or just like scrolling through their Facebook or even on our website. So that way they don't have to like watch it at a specific time?
A, a video of the, of the design or us presenting it?
You were just talking about how like you could interact and tell the history and like go into explanation. Can you make that into a video? That we can just like repost online?
Can we, Isaiah?
We could probably give it to Chris.
Yeah.
She's made a couple of videos here.
It may not be highly refined, but I think we could.
I think it's just gonna be really hard to get residents involved all at one time. And if we truly value their feedback, giving them the ability to watch the video, you know, within a week timeframe on their own time and reading their comments might be a little more helpful to developing this part of the city.
Okay. I think if anything, we could, we could, we could have this in a PowerPoint and, and even a voiceover with me.
I think that's the best option.
Yeah, it'd probably be the easiest rather than a, than a movie video, but I think I could tell the story. Do you think that would work just as well as just a verbal description as it goes through the presentation?
I think you do an amazing job at describing things and I think that people will love you as long as you just go in there and continue to be genuine. I think you'll, you'll do an excellent job.
Okay. Then let's do it.
I, I agree with everything that Councilwoman Floris Kell said. So, and maybe even as much as like a, if it's virtual and you're doing some kind of Ring Central or some kind of Zoom situation, we can broadcast it live on Facebook. Or if that is too technical, we can record the screen and the presentation and that dynamic and then upload that to our social media platforms and on the city page, maybe even create a, a page. I'm talking to IT, you know, a downtown revitalization URL where the presentation could be hosted with some text. It doesn't have to all fall on you, Anne, to do that. Certainly, we have the ability to support in, in those ways as, as well. But getting, getting the information out there at this stage in such a way that we can engage and get some of that feedback in the earlier stages, I think would, would be helpful. The question still out there though is to whether or not between now and January 16th, we want them to put pencils down or whether or not we think that they should continue moving forward. And I'd love your, to get some feedback on that.
Okay. Can you clarify that a little bit? Like, do we want them to stop developing it and just? I guess I don't, I don't understand your question.
Well, what Anne is saying is that the, this project is already past the point of where, it's not a blank slate. It's more about we're presenting kind of a vision and, you know, these concepts and asking for feedback on the plan that we are embarking on. And Anne is under contract and so they're actively building this out. They're getting feedback and incorporating new elements, but there's a lot of engineering and architectural work behind a concept plan that they'll be working on over the next six weeks by contract. And so she's saying, you know, if we continue down this path and then there's a hard change as a result of some public engagement, would that be, you know, is that the right path or would it be better to slow down right now until we go through a process of public hearing? I think the plan that you've got is, is pretty amazing. So I, I think the public will be very happy to provide feedback, but I don't anticipate that there would be major revisions. But some of the points and questions that you have, Anne, about the tables and the historic commission and the tree and a few of those things would be the areas where, you know, we might have to make moves after the 16th, depending on if everybody says, you know, we, we, we love these tables, we want them to stay right where they are, for example, or something like that. I'm not sure that's what the general population would say, but, you know, there has to still be some flexibility. So if you continue down the path that you're on and council or public is giving feedback and the council is affirming that feedback, you would still be able to make changes after the 16th, even if you're going. That's kind of my thinking is march forward, but not in such a way that we're boxed in by the 16th.
Now, the only thing that keeps me up at night every now and then is the historic commissions, both of them, saying, you know, we don't want to change the circulation of the park. We don't want you to touch the sidewalks. That, that keeps me awake more than anything else that the public would be concerned about.
Well, we've known that that was the biggest dialogue that you're gonna have to have and I'm glad you've already started it and it's gonna have to continue for sure.
Right. And I don't know about that timing. And I hate to switch subjects on you, but the timing of the historic commission is kind of their timing, the way I'm kind of reading it. And I'm wondering if we can't put our heads together, maybe I'm, maybe this is more of a, a question than a, than a direction, is between Parks and Rec, city council. Below, I mean, we need, I think we need to approach them together. Am I making sense? I mean, we need to make a. I mean, we need to make a request. I think a formal request because we're, we need to move quickly. We'd like to, I think we all want this built next calendar year. And if they wait another 90 days to get back with us, it's gonna be tough.
Well, I think that should be a separate track that marches forward immediately because these questions, they're gonna be able to provide you the feedback, whether you like it or don't. They're gonna provide that feedback. So nothing should delay the conversations with the historical commission. And a public town hall type engagement event shouldn't have any bearing on that.
Right.
So whether you want to go fast or not, we still have to go at the pace of the, you know, whatever the historic commission will, you know, will allow. But anything the council can do to help in that regard as far as furthering those conversations, also, please, don't hesitate to let us know. Councilor Ellison?
I definitely see the challenges all the way around. And the benefit is this is being recorded, and we can certainly use what we have this evening to kind of help start that process of public engagement. You know, we could certainly pull this clip out of the agenda, maybe even make it a, as all of our meetings are archived and folks can watch anytime, but maybe pulling this clip and then presenting that and helping push that through our channels, maybe even making a separate page on our website saying, hey, you know, and soliciting feedback that way prior to that time. So maybe, you know, we can be aware of any strong public sentiment either way on on this park. That would be another thing. But I certainly understand time being of essence on, you know, you all working, you're under contract essentially. We're paying you and as well as the the going forward with partnering and figuring things out with the historical commissions. Just an idea.
It's also a good one. Anne, do you have enough from us at this point?
I I believe I do. I think we, I think we have a good handle on the public presentation, how we'd like to format that. I think there's some some good thoughts there. I guess one last question regarding the historic commissions. Is is there an order to meeting with them? In other words, we have met with with Kate Johnson. It, she mentioned that she was going to go to the state herself, but should we call the state ourselves and initiate it or allow her to facilitate that? I don't know the the dynamics there or the process there.
I I would say engage the state on your own, and if you're doing it via email, you certainly bring Kate into that dialogue. So that would be the, that would be my recommendation, as well as the board. But it might be worth finding, asking when their next meeting is and what the what that process might look like. Jerry Hendricks should be able to help you with that as well.
Okay. I think that's it. Jose, do you have any other questions?
No, not at the moment.
Okay.
Great presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Y'all have a nice evening, and thank you for having us tonight. We really enjoyed it.
Thank you.